Okay, folks, if you'd like to take a seat, we'll reconvene the public hearing. First hand I saw go up was Planning Commissioner Karen Cunningham. Karen, if you want to come forward. I saw a few others go up, so I think Joel Diaz, I think I saw your hand, and somebody else over here. Ron, is that you? Okay.
Uh, no. Mr. Mayor?
Karen, you're gonna need more than five minutes here, or?
Uh, no, I'm not.
Okay.
Would you like me to take more than five minutes?
No, 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 I'm just asking folks if they need more than five minutes to let me know beforehand, so you can kind of prepare.
No, I don't think so. I've just been taking notes back there. Just so you know, we all made individual decisions based on information that we were given at the Planning Commission meetings. Some of that information this evening, you have been asked to overlook, such as, I would say probably hundreds of manipulated photographs that we're now being asked to ignore. And we made our decision based on some of those photographs. And my comments about some of the photographs were that they were manipulated, and I don't think that's very fair. However, I did bring a couple of manipulated photographs to show you, because I think one of the big things that nobody has actually spoken about this evening, and it was part of why we made our decision, well, part of why I made my decision, was the glaring lack of landscape on that hill. When you drive up San Bruno Avenue, that is one god ugly piece of land right now. It has been degraded into the ground. There is zero left of value. Unlike, a couple of speakers have said that there are endangered species on that mountain. I beg to differ at this point, and I will clarify that in just a minute. But, so, I brought my own manipulated photographs, just so we can be clear. So, when you do zoom in, and you zoom in far, yes, for sure, we see that there are things that this particular property, as is, will block. There's no doubting that. Sherry, can we go to the next one? And me not being great at Photoshop, I kind of cloned that tree off to the right, and put it down the hill, which is what I would expect that if we were to rehabilitate that hill, there would be buckeyes, and toayans, and other native plants. And that was one of the things that I was very aggressive about before we made our decision as a planning commission, was, there's no plants here. And it was brought up that there were lemon trees and whatever, but what was omitted from that conversation earlier tonight was that we made it very clear that anything in that landscaping needed to be of the mountain for the mountain, since right now it's invasive, and there is little or no value left. This is not my comment, so I'll get to that in just a minute. Can we go to the next photo, please? So these are really just photos of me cloning the trees that are right there, and moving them around the property. So I would expect that, and this is what we said in our deliberations, was, if that house goes up, there needs to be landscaping, and there needs to be landscaping that is maintainable. And one of the things that I asked the city specifically was, how do we enforce that? Because one of the things I've seen around town is, we put these landscape ordinances in place, or we put these landscape requirements, I should say, on property development, and then, you know, within the next year or so, it's a mess. For example, the Habitat for Humanity houses, I've already brought that to the attention of the planning department, because the Habitat for Humanity houses down by the park, until recently, were an absolute eyesore with overgrown weeds and completely neglected. So I think our landscaping plan has to be brought into consideration with whatever we're doing here, because that wasn't really talked about. I mean, we're looking at a barren mountain that's got nothing on it, so my photos were just me playing in Photoshop, which I'm not very good at. So you'll see that the moment there is a tree on that property, a lot of what we're talking about becomes invisible. And I know some people said, "Oh, but trees aren't permanent." Well, there was arguments all through this evening's discussions of the beautiful trees that have softened the impact of various other properties around town. Relative to ridge line, thank you, Sherry, I think that was kind of it. You get the idea, what I was talking about? Thanks very much. I'm done with that, yeah? So, I asked a question earlier of staff, how many ridge line vacant properties are there left in Brisbane? Well, there's three. There is eight Thomas, eighty-eight Thomas, oh, sorry, ninety-nine Thomas, whatever it is. Ninety-nine Thomas, eighty-eight Thomas, and eight Thomas. Eighty-eight Thomas has already been approved, and if you go anywhere down on the Bay Trail and look up, the story poles actually look higher, in most cases, than the story poles of eight Thomas. So these were things that we took into consideration. I spent sixteen hours driving around trying to look at all of these different views and points and whatever. So, we have three separate properties. I'll take it quite personally that it appears that people don't think that we are capable, as a planning commission, of separating each property and each project that comes before us, that we are going to set a precedent. Well, I'm sorry, the precedent was set with the property at eighty-eight Thomas. There was a big home there. The problem that we also came to the conclusion, I came to the conclusion when we were talking about this in the Planning Commission, was stepping that property, stepping that home further down the mountain actually then could cause some erosion issues, et cetera, and that this has been talked about many, many times, and that's why the property is where it is, and is the size it is, and is the orientation that it is. When this first came to me, my concerns had nothing to do with bird's eye view from down at the lagoon or at the park, because I really couldn't find with the naked eye, you know, very much that was of issue at all, especially if there was just one tree on that property. But what was of major concern to me in the beginning was the butterfly habitat and the seismic issues. And I researched them in exhausted fashion. And how I came to my conclusions relative to habitat was that I actually called Ken McIntyre at Mountain Watch, and I said, "Who are your top four people that I should talk to?" And he gave me those names, and I did speak with each of those people, and I asked them extensive questions, all the same questions about the habitat on that side of the mountain. I was told by each of these experts that there was nothing of value left, it had been degraded for so long, and to rehabilitate that particular property would cost millions and millions of dollars. That were the answers that I was given for me to make my decisions when I was doing it at the Planning Commission. From a seismic perspective, eight Thomas is on bedrock. As you get into eighty-eight Thomas, the northern end of eighty-eight Thomas sits on the scarpe of a landslide, and then ninety-nine Thomas is right in landslide territory, and sits at the scarpe of a landslide in the British Acres. And right next to ninety-nine Thomas is where the landslide occurred in nineteen thirty-six. So, from a seismic perspective, I didn't have any issues with eight Thomas, because it does not reside within that landslide place. I think people were very correct in saying that, what is the intention of this ordinance? That is definitely not made very clear. I mean, is the intention of the ordinance that someone with a microscope can get down on the Bay Trail and make a determination that there is an impact with binoculars, with telephoto lenses, like we all did, manipulating those photographs to the Planning Commission and the general public? I think I've covered that in that. So, you know, I hate to blow that endangered species thing out. And, you know, I've been part of Mountain Watch since the day I moved into this town. I have been on every campaign to stop building in the quarry, anything that was to preserve our mountains. So, I'm being put in a position now to sound like I am a traitor. I've been called a traitor, and I've been spat on in the last two weeks, just so you know. I talked about the landscape plan, and I also talked about the landslide. From a personal perspective, I worry about what we're doing moving forward. Some of the tenor of the arguments here this evening would indicate that if my house burns down, I'm going to have to move hell and high water to rebuild. So you better think about that, too, please. And I think a lot of this is definitely about preserving private views. I drove all over Brisbane with the original photographs that you were given, and this was all about private view protection, and that was very publicly talked about months before this came to the city council. And I really would like to acknowledge that, you know, the trees are going to make all the difference. This landscape plan is going to make all the difference. I don't have to like or dislike this property, but this was what I was handed, and this is why I made the decision that I did. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen. Joel Diaz?
Hi, Joel Diaz. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So, I'll be pretty short. The, I think we all generally want to preserve the views of the mountain, and I think that ordinances like these are good in general, because they point us in the right direction. But oftentimes, these ordinances or other laws are fraught with errors and flaws, and we kind of discover them along the way, and, you know, we try to make the best of it. What I've heard here mentioned by both sides of the argument was a phrase several times, it's community-wide value. And I've heard some people say, "It's hard to define that. It's hard to determine what that means." And I agree, and I think to know something, you've got to be able to prove it. You've got to be able to demonstrate it to know something. And I don't know that we can define or know what community-wide value is in this case, but I'm not sure that we need to solve for that, to solve for the definition of community-wide value. I think we can do the opposite, and we can solve for what is not community-wide value. And I think that we can prove that tonight, just by virtue of the community that's here, significant, important people that find that it is not community-wide value. I do recognize that that phrase might be used in the general plan, and I think it is the charge of the Planning Commission to carry out those policies as best they can. I think that's what they've done. They've looked at this in depth, arrived at this answer. The staff has also recommended approval. They've looked at it at length. And I don't take their determination lightly. I think if you look at all the work that they've done over the past few years, for example, I think they're pretty even-keeled. I don't think this is a fluke. I think they're just doing the best they can with the flaws and the errors in the ordinance. And, as I said, I think we can demonstrate that it's not of community-wide value, just by virtue of the people that are here tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Ron Davis?
Ron Davis, 325 Humboldt Road. I would just like to point out and to say that this whole process is flawed. It will never be fair. People invest in property, they invest in this town, they come into the town, and they look at a set of rules, just like they would come to this country and say, "These are the set of rules that I can live by. This is the set of driving rules, this is the set of rules in business. These are the things that if I do these things, I can have my happiness, and I can do..." Nobody else can tell me, "No, you can't do that, because our gang over here doesn't like it." And I think this sets up that exact thing to happen in this kind of situation. When you have so many people involved, from Mountain Watch, that really don't want anything built, anywhere, I think there's a strong point of bias. And I think that while saving the mountain is good, quarry development, I'm not for, housing out in the baylands, I'm not jumping up and down about that either. I like the town. I've been here thirty years. I like the way it is. I like the smallness, I like the diversity. For me, I think that if you want to change things, you've got to change the laws that people buy property with and that come in on the beginning, on the front end, instead of later saying, "Well, you know what, hmm, nah", and make them come back, and make them come back, and make them come back, until they either sue you or they run out of money, which in either case is not efficient. We should have the systems that are in place for somebody to do something. Now, I've always even thought that the rule that you can't subdivide a lot, that's ninety-five hundred square feet, that you can't divide it and put two small, reasonable-sized houses on it, that they will not, you cannot, with our current code, split that down the middle and say, "Okay, call it good", you know, have a little less than five thousand square feet, but we can have two little houses instead of one big house. To me, I think that's kind of, that doesn't serve us, I don't think. I like the diversity to the character. I like small houses, big houses, and all the mix. But design review on this level, I think, is really sets us up for having meetings like this when there's so many other things to be taken care of. So the systems should be in place to take care of this. You shouldn't have to be sitting here, probably meeting after meeting after meeting, when this is going to continue to happen on some level in some area. So that's my two cents worth. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Okay, I got a few more renewed slips. Did I see any other hands before we went on break? Okay. Gentleman right there, come on up. I saw a bunch of hands go up, so just give us your names, please.
Good evening. My name is Dave Bostrom. I live on Herald Road. And anyway, I just wanted to say that I'm speaking on behalf of my neighbors on Herald Road. The majority of them are for the project. Anyway, we've had to look at that empty, just weeded lot. It's been graded, but it's just an eyesore, and I've looked at it for thirty years personally. And anyway, I mean, everybody on my block that has to drive by there several times a day just doesn't like to look at it. It would be, it would seem like a home would be much more appropriate for that lot. And particularly if they're going to plant trees. I think from the pictures that I saw of the mountain there, it seems like the, you know, the visual impact is just minimal. And, anyway, it seems like if you allow the people to build a house there, I'd end up with some more good neighbors in this town. Anyway, also, I don't think there is, well, it sounds like this has been addressed, but it doesn't sound like there are any endangered species on this property, due to the fact that it's been cleared and weeded yearly. So I think that would, that's kind of a non-issue. And then, in closing, anyway, just please sort of respect the thought and the hard work of the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Dave. The lady there, thanks.
Good evening. I'm Linda Parker, and I live on Herald Road. And first, I'd like to say that Brisbane is such a wonderful community. I mean, that's why we all live here, because it's got the greatest weather, it's got wonderful people, beautiful views, and it's contained. There's not a whole lot of area that you can build on anymore. And we love the idea of the smallness of this community. And there are just a few vacant lots left that are available to be built on. And there are other people who want to come and live in this wonderful community. And it can never be a big community, because there's just not enough land to do this on. And so, when a home comes up for sale, you know that they're taking up, like, in three weeks. They're gone. Somebody has bought it. And so, I just feel that, you know, let's kind of help people who want to come and build homes here, because there's going to be just a few that are going to be able to be built. And then we're bringing in nice, new people into the community that will help bring in more money, which, you know, we all know that we need money. We saw that when we were taxing the tanks. And so, we're going to get permit fees, and we're going to get income, or property taxes, and all this kind of stuff on these kind of expensive homes. So it's going to be, I think it's going to be good for all of us in the long run. So I am for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, back to the slips. I have our current Planning Commissioner, Jamil Manir. And Jamil's been on the Planning Commission longer than anybody.
Not forever.
I think ever. I don't know.
Who knows, forever. First of all, thank you very much for reappointing me. Last time, when I was asked for interview, as it turned out that I had to interview the council members, they said that I don't have, we don't have anything to ask you. Why don't you ask us some questions? And I was not ready for that. But anyhow, if Cliff or anybody else want to talk to me, interview me, I'm available anytime when you want to schedule. It will be my privilege to come and see you guys and address any concerns you have. With that, I'd like to talk about this particular project. Number one, I want to clarify what Michelle Simon said, that I ignore the ordinance. As a planning commissioner, I cannot do that, and I will personally go and look at the records to see whether I said that. I don't, I think there's some kind of a misunderstanding here. I might have said that I'm confused with the language of the ordinance, but by no means I will ignore an ordinance that's on the books. That's no, no. And if she is hurt about that, I will definitely discuss with her. So I will review that up, and if I did say that, then I will take my word back, because that was not my intention. As far as the confusion goes, I already expressed that when we were working on this particular ordinance, and I think Council Member Cliff was there. My objections are that this particular ordinance is so difficult to really figure out what need to be done here, how are we going to, what kind of interpretation we have. As an engineer, I look at more as a probability of everything that you do, as to what the probability that this particular design or anything will abstract the views or will create a structural hazard or anything like that. So there were a number of slides and pictures were presented to us, and I think Karen Cunningham mentioned that some of them were taken with, you know, naked eye, but with telescopic lenses and all that, so be it, because there's no real guidance to see how it should be done, and at what length, and how often. Are you going to take every one foot along the trail? Or are you going to have certain set points where we are interested in finding out whether it's blocking the view or not? So, as a result, the staff, as well as some of the community members, as well as Planning Commissioner Cunningham, they all went with their sophisticated camera and all that, tried to take the pictures, and there were some discrepancies as to what, you know, some of the pictures, somebody took it right, going under the ditch and trying to make sure that that particular house, the stakes are visible. To me, that was not a right interpretation of this particular code. I look at it from the point of view that if anybody is walking on that trail or taking a bicycle ride or driving on Bay Shore, they will have the overall view of the entire hill. How many times people walk by and particularly looking for a single point and say, "Oh, gee, that particular house is obstructing my view"? Not many people will do that. And if you go on the trail, mind you, on the right-hand side, you have the beautiful view of the Oakland and San Francisco also. How many, if you're going there every day, how many times you're going to look to the left and see, "Gee, let me see if I can see that particular house", or, "Gee, it's really, really obstructing the ridge line"? First of all, this particular house does not obstruct the ridge line. It's about ten feet covering the slope of the mountain. So, I look at it, the probability of anybody looking at it is probably very close to zero, or maybe 1.1 percent. And are we going to penalize for that? Are we going to say that this is not, this is really, really obstructing the view, and it's going to be detrimental to the value of the citizens of Brisbane? From my analysis, I thought that was not correct, that to penalize the applicant for that. The whole idea was that we should not build something that's going to stand out. And I think what we were looking at, we were not looking for something like those towers that are really catches our eye. This particular home, after the landscaping and everything is done, and if they do put the trees in front of that, right now it's bare, you know? After it's completely built, I don't think anybody will even notice that that house is there, because it's nestled into so many other homes. And that's, I thought that from that basis alone, it did not create, it did not violate the principal argument about, against the view of that, of the ridge. So, that was my first point regarding going against the wishes of some of the citizens that were for or against the project. The second thing that was brought out is the courtyard. And the main, one of the arguments was made that the courtyard should be considered into the floor area, because they have floor area ratio. And I called several cities myself, and in fact, I know quite a few buildings that have the central courtyard. And in fact, I was working in the city of Mountain View, and I talked to them about that particular case also. And none of the cities consider courtyard as a living area, unless you have the roof on top of that. So, and if you extend the definition of the living area, courtyard, penalize that, then all the surrounding areas outside the house, we can use the same argument, that somebody can move in and stay in the backyard. So are we going to allow, consider that as a floor area also, or not? So, the only way you can consider the courtyard as part of the floor area is when you put the roof on top of that. And I don't, and the, in fact, if you look at in San Francisco, some of those homes in San Siro district, those courtyards really add charm to the house, and they do bring the nice airflow. And I have some friends, they have built homes like that, and they are very pleased with that. So I thought that because there is no precedence in terms of, you know, consider that as part of the floor area, I did not agree with one of the citizens that was complaining about that. And the third thing was, it's going to set the precedence. Every single project that comes before the Planning Commission, we have to look at it on its own merit. You know, if you worry about the precedent, then we cannot do anything, because anything we do can set a precedent. So we have to look at the pluses and minuses of the projects and make sure that it meets the ordinance, it meets the requirements of the city. And so, on that basis only, I cannot deny this particular project, because it's going to set the precedence. Because when the other projects are ready to come before us, we have to go through the same exercise and make sure that they meet the requirements that the city has set. So, that's where the three main arguments were made. The fourth one was brought up once in one of the meetings, and that was that you can lower the height of the roof, so that the footprint, the obstruction to the view of the mountain will be reduced. And I looked at the plans myself, and I talked to the architect also, and I agree with the architect that it's not, it's actually going to have a reverse effect, because it's going, first of all, it's going to destroy the visual impact. The way the house is laid out is going to be a nice addition to that. If you're going to reduce the roof line, you're going to destroy that. Secondly, you're going to have to do some more digging, and also the drainage issues will be there, too, to get the water away from the roof. So that option, I looked at it, and I said that that's not possible either. The only way you can redesign, and I heard from some of the audiences that we should lower the roof line, and then everything will be okay. But I see that that's not a viable option either, because it's, one of the things that Planning Commission has to look at it, is the visual impact also. And with that particular one, it's not only the visual effect, but also serious problems with the construction of the building itself. So, based on those four elements, four points, based on my analysis, I thought... I thought that this particular project has not significant impact, and I said, we should go ahead and approve that. And again, I will say that we have to change the language of the ordinance. This particular language is so, I mean, it's subject to so much interpretation. And I was surprised that the minute we, the design came before us, everybody got their cameras and started taking the pictures. That's not the real world situation. How many people will go with the telephoto lenses or, or even the regular camera and start taking the pictures? And, and also, don't forget that when you're, when you're doing this analysis, you are looking for that particular property or this particular house. But the average person walking over there, he has no idea that the house being built or not. He's going to look at the, the entire, you know, mountain and see, is it really going to affect his, his view? My analysis showed that it won't. So based on that, I recommend that this particular project be approved. So thank you very much, and if any other questions, you can always ask me.
Okay, thank you, Jamil. Very good. Okay, I have two more slips, and this is getting back into round two. So we are 10:37 in the hour right now, so I guess a philosophical question to the council. Do you wish to continue, or do we want to come back another day?
I want to continue.
Okay, and for how long? Because I'm not sure we're going to get to a decision tonight unless we want to take it till tomorrow morning early, and if you're up for that, then let me know.
I'd, I'd like to continue the public hearing to give everyone a chance to speak, and then if we need to go on to our other matters and revisit this, I think would be a better way to handle it.
Okay, council will agree with that? Okay, so I got two more slips. But for anybody who's not spoken yet, because we're getting into round two, I want to give people who haven't spoken yet a first chance. And Dave, I saw your hand up there, so come up, please. And then the gentleman there, you, second.
Dave Reinhardt, 466 here at Plant Road. I need about two minutes. Half is a planning commissioner and half is a resident, torn inside. I just wanted to come up here and tell you that I wanted to let you know that I did the best job I could with what was in front of me. It wasn't an easy one. And with all the information, the sidewalks, the photographs, the trusted material from, from the staff, you know, I definitely lost some sleep over it, but I feel like we made the best decision that we could under the circumstances. As a, as a resident, I love Brisbane. I went to kindergarten here. Actually, the first time I went up the mountain, my dad had to carry me halfway up because I told him, I can do it, I can do it, Dad. But I couldn't, so he carried me up. And, you know, it's, it's, it's tough. I mean, I'm emotional because I do care about this town. And, you know, the, the community value isn't just the structures, you know, even though they do represent who we are. I gutted my house, and actually, I ended up buying the house that I lived in when I was here. And I, you know, saved the bones and kept the footprint the same because, you know, I just, that was part of who, who I was, and I wanted to represent that. I feel like the spirit of the community is also in the new people that are trying to come into this town, and, you know, they're doing the best job they can. And with, you know, legally, I mean, that's, that's, aside from that, I, I just feel that, you know, they, I, I don't want to push them away and de-spirit them, and that's happened before. I don't want to get that reputation in Brisbane. Ron Davis had a great story about that. And where people were accusing, oh, they're going to flip the house, and, you know, well, no, the people actually left because they were just so dispirited by the process, and that would be a shame. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Gentlemen? Just give your, your name for the record, please.
Mayor, council, council members, my name is Alex Lau. I live in the ridge, and just, you know, I, I moved here for the views, but I've stayed for the community, and I've grown, I've lived here for 14 years. And despite kind of feeling like an outcast at the ridge, our family is also out of home in, in, in the Acres. And because we love Brisbane, because my daughters, you know, love going outside and seeing the hawks and seeing the owls on our, you know, on our hillside and seeing the beautiful views and the sunsets. So it's great living here. My wife, she was one of the founding members for Mothers of Brisbane. And, you know, we had opportunities, we were looking to move to Marin, the Burlingame or the Hillsboro, but we wanted to stay here because we felt we were at home here. And I'm up here because I wanted to kind of give a different point of view from the earlier statements, because I think we should respect the planning commission's decision. You know, they have guidelines that we, that they followed, and those prospective, that family followed those guidelines to a T, and even more so. But then, you know, there's that argument, that subjective argument of these citywide values. And I respect other people's opinions that it might, you know, hinder their views or block their views of the mountain, but I would hope, also hope that they respect other people's opinions where, you know, I, when I'm walking on that trail, I wouldn't even notice that. I live in the Acres, and I drive by Thomas', and that place is an eyesore. It would be great to have a home there to improve our city. I think that's what, as a mayor, as a council member, is that we're trying to improve our city. And I think, you know, that home there would actually improve our city, because we all want to, nobody likes change, but we want to, you know, to improve our home values, to improve and retain people living here. We want to attract families that want to live here. And it, I find it ironic that, you know, we're giving so much time on this home that could improve our city so much. But then when I drive around town, there's cars up on blocks, tarps outside our homes. And, you know, our city's much better than that. So I'm all for improving our city, and that's why I hope that you would, you know, highly consider their, their application. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Alex. Okay, do you have anybody else who's not spoken who wishes to speak? Okay, not seeing any hands, we're going to part two. David Schooli, for round two.
Thanks again. It does seem to be that there is a sent, a question, a center question among us, and I hope this has not become anger among us. But to look at all we're facing in the town and the future of Brisbane. We can look back, for example. Fred Smith, council member and worker for this city for a long time, spent an enormous amount of energy to save the Acres, the upper Acres, to work for the purchase of that land and to protect a very special part of this town and this mountain. And that energy and its care, to me, has, has been something so special and makes me to continue to think about the fact that here we're facing something. Is this going to be a fight among ourselves for growth, building, or protection? And I think in between, it's all going to happen in some sort of way. There's going to be some growth, no matter what, wherever it goes. There are upper acres that I'm sure it's going to happen to, but can we protect the lower acres as well? And the lower acres is the one that now we're, we're, we're facing for the first time. And I would hope, among all the questions that are going to face us and the fights, I hope there's, there can be a more careful watch. And some of those watch we saw today, photos were not clear, and they're not, they're pointing up and looking from one area to the other. And I think they're all kind of as phony as to be. But the watchfulness that we're doing on those areas are something we have to be careful. Second thought is rare species. They're saying it's a wreck, it's, there's nothing in there. But some of our major efforts of San Bruno Mountain Watch is to return rare species to particular areas in Buckeye and Al Canyon and other areas. And there is a chance for good parts of the lower Acres that could also be protected between there all the way to South City. And I think and hope that we all can work together about those possible hopes. And again, the protection and care for a town that could easily be undone with further growth in all directions. Too easy, too easy. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Next slip I have is Michelle Simon.
Michelle Simon, Brisbane resident. I've heard a lot of stuff tonight, and it's very emotional, and you really have a tough decision in front of you. And I just want to answer a couple of points or bring up a few things that I heard since I stood up here before. Like Ron said something about, you know, people come and there's laws, and they expect to follow the rules. Well, the people who bought the property knew what the rules were when they bought the property. And, you know, Ron, Joel Diaz said, you know, there are several significant and important people here who are supporting this. And I'm kind of curious how he defines significant and important people versus, you know, the average person like me, who's lived here all my life, but I don't consider myself any more significant or important than anybody else here. It's about all of us. And when the average person looks at San Bruno Mountain, the average person driving by at 70 miles an hour, flying into SFO, and they look at San Bruno Mountain, many of them just see a big brown hill with dirt on it. That's what they see, okay? And that's what the county supervisors saw back in 1960 when they wanted to take the top off of San Bruno Mountain because it was just a big brown lump and fill the bay with it. They didn't stop to look at the grasslands and the wildflowers and the butterflies and the beauty that's there. And it is true that people's individual perception is what forms the pictures of our lives. And while one person may look at it and just see a barren mountain with nothing on it instead of a grassland habitat that is worthy of saving because that's where the butterflies mate, that is a different point of view. And, and I guess we have to decide our, what average view are you going to look at? We have an exceptional treasure here that obviously many of us still don't understand. When you can say that, you know, it's nothing but a, a dry grassland or a bunch of grass, well, that's what that whole hilltop was, you know, 50 or 60 years ago. There's a picture on Facebook under, you know, you're from Brisbane when? And it shows Tulare Hill with three little houses on it, and the rest is all grassland. And, you know, you talk about rehabilitating it by planting a bunch of trees that butterflies can't fly through, and yet it's supposed to be part of the HCP and, and, you know, the hilltopping of the butterflies. And I guess, I guess it really depends where you're standing and what your view is and what you value as a community, which I think is defined in our general plan and was voted on by the people of Brisbane, yes, a long time ago, but I'm not sure we'd vote any different today. And I guess it comes down to, you know, where do you draw the line in the sand? You, the city council, maybe not you individually, but the Brisbane city council, tried to draw the line in the sand with the ridgethop ordinance. And it's not just three properties, it's every ridge line that comes down here in Brisbane that will be affected by this ordinance. Every precedent you set, every exception you make. So I guess it's where are you willing to draw the line in the sand? When are you willing to say no? No, we're, we're going to stand by the community values that we believe in and that we voted on. And, you know, people look at, I, I saw the disdain when somebody said, and those Mountain Watch people. I was a Brisbane person first. I grew up on this mountain. I became active in Mountain Watch because their values aligned with mine, not the other way around. Okay? And that's why I sit on the board of Mountain Watch now, because we do valuable work to protect the mountain and the things that generations from now, we will value what is left, if there's any. And that is why we're here, that's why I'm here. At almost 11 o'clock at night after being sick all week, talking to you about this, not because I'm trying to protect my personal view of the mountain, bullshit. That's not why I'm here. And I was insulted by the planning commissioner that said people were just here to protect their own personal view. I'm here to protect what we're all supposed to be here to protect. And that is what we value, which is San Bruno Mountain, which is a rare treasure that has been entrusted to us to protect. Because if we don't do it, no one else is going to. And it starts with the line in the sand and where you're going to draw it, and what are you going to do? Are you going to take Paradise and put up a parking lot? Or are you going to protect what you value? And why everyone comes here and says, oh, I love Brisbane, and then let's pave it over? Is that what you really want? Or are you going to stand by the line in the sand that you, as the executive body of this city duly elected, has decided? Is the line in the sand? And it's up to you. And we'll stand by your decision. And I'm not trying to keep new people out or anything. My heart breaks over this, it really breaks over it. But really, you have to make a decision, and it's a tough one either way you go. You're dancing on the razor's edge.
Okay, I'm out of slips. Do I have any more hands? Anybody wish to talk on this? Counsel's pleasure. Close the public hearing? Come back?
Make a move to close.
Have some talk about it, or do you want to?
You know, I have some questions, you know, to ask of.
Well, I know we're going to have, we're going to have questions for that, but I'm asking, do we want to close the public hearing? Ask some questions? I'm not sure we're going to make it to a decisions tonight. Yeah, I think we've got a long way to go. So we can leave the public hearing open, come back maybe next Monday or something. I think we're open next Monday, which is March 10th. And.
Yeah, then we can leave it open then.
Specifically deal with it then. We can leave the public hearing open and maybe limit our speakers to two minutes. I don't think we're going to get much more new information than what we've already got tonight, and then get through it and then have a council discussion, make a decision on where we're going to go from this.
I think, I think that's a good idea. I, we got quite a bit of correspondence that came in today. I'd really like the opportunity to look at it and to dissect some of the comments that have been made, and I think that that would be the best way to do it.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, is that a good way to go with this?
That certainly is an option. It's up to the council. The council could close the public hearing. It could keep the public hearing open until it decides to deliberate at the next meeting. So its decision to do that certainly is one of the options it has, and is fine.
Okay, counsel's pleasure on that.
Can I make a motion to continue this meeting to March 10?
This meeting or the hearing on?
This hearing. This, the hearing on design permit review.
Keep the public hearing open.
Yeah.
I second that.
Okay, now a motion, a second to continue this public hearing till March 8th, or March 10th, which is on 8 Thomas'. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. So next Monday at 7:30, we will reconvene the public hearing on this. And thanks to all the speakers and to the applicant. I know it's time-consuming, but it's part of the process, so we'll get there. Okay.
Just make one request of staff. Just a, okay, the request. I think it would be useful to have a list of all the letters that we have received as a part of the public record, so that people know that their letters have been received and are being considered in the process. Okay?
Okay, all right. So counsel's pleasure on the agenda. We are getting late in the hour here, it's 10:55 PM. So is item B you're recommending to? So is, um, item B, you're recommending to continue to March 27th?
17th, actually.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a, I'm sorry, that should have read March 17th.
Okay. You really want St. Patrick's Day as a holiday, and I agree.
I'm doing my best.
Okay, so March 17th, do we need a, a motion for that?
Um, no, we've got it listed on the agenda as that way.
Okay. All right.
Let's do that.
Let's move on to staff reports, city managers' report on upcoming activities.
No report tonight.
Okay. That's why we hired you. Okay, Mayor Council.
I can sense the room.
All right. Mayor Council Matters, uh, item A, countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. Do we wish to kind of put some of these on, um, without getting into details, maybe our last meeting in the month? If people take their notes, copious notes, and, uh, um, give their reports in the last meeting in the month on, uh, some of our countywide assignments and subcommittee reports? Unless you're just dying to talk.
Uh, can I make one quick comment?
Okay.
Um, I attended a library JPA meeting, and the one item of interest was that they awarded some small amounts of fundings to different libraries for looking at building a new, new facilities, and these were amounts in the $200,000 range. And I believe it is Pacifica who is, their library got a small donation, or their library system, and they're looking at $35 million to build a new library facility. So, just so that we have a little reality check on what a library could cost.
They're going to get a reality check.
So I just wanted to ask that on, and, and with that, I'll, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
Yep, I just wanted to, um, point out, um, on airport noise, I, I met last week with Senator Jerry Hill. Um, he asked to meet with me to just talk about, you know, what I want to, what I want to do in office. And he actually brought up the airport, airport noise issue and asked me, um, you know, about it. And, um, we had just had our subcommittee meeting, um, a few days prior, and so, um, Cliff, I wanted to let you know that, um, the senator is willing to help us out, um, write letters if he needs, if we would like him to. So, um, we should get in touch with him if, if we need any assistance on trying to get our input onto that Metroplex, um, environmental assessment before it gets released.
Yeah.
So that was encouraging. And then, um, did you want to hold off on the other subcommittee reports?
I would like to, unless, unless it's really pressing to you.
No. That was the only time sensitive one.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to written communications. We got a bevy of it right here, so, uh, we won't go with that tonight. So moving to, uh, I think an important one is item C, uh, which is considered March 10th or March 29th for the council goal-setting workshop, and I think we just took care of that.
You just took care of the 10th.
Took care of the 10th, and now I'm going to take care of the 29th. When I put this down, I didn't realize the city attorney was not available on that day, and we're going to need him because of the discussion on the, uh, Baylands planning process, so that kind of puts us out another week.
Is this something the assistant city attorney can, uh?
Well, I won't be available either. I think I had sent an email saying I'm out of town that weekend.
Oh, I apologize. You did.
Right. You got it on the 29th?
Oh, this is the Saturday. Okay.
Okay, so, um, we're talking about April Fools now?
Um, sometime after April Fools.
Yeah, okay. Like the, what would that be, the?
Well, the 5th, uh, April 5th would be a Saturday, 6th would be a Sunday, or the following weekend, and I'd depend on people's availability.
I'm not available, actually, that, that first week of April is, uh, spring break for my daughter's school, so we may be out of town that weekend. Um, but I am available the following.
Just vastly moving into our budget.
Here, yeah, goal-setting.
Well, I, I mean.
Ditto our goals from last year.
I know it's somewhat frustrating, but, but as long as, I mean, I, from my perspective, we get it done before the budget, um, before the budget hearings, we'll, we'll, you know, I think you'll be in good, good condition. It's not that like anything's being held up.
We're, we're already collecting the data for that, so, I mean, it's not like we're going to have any.
I think if you did it April 12th, um, that weekend would still be fine.
Okay. Is everybody good with that?
That's a Saturday?
Saturday, April 12th?
I believe so. So far out now.
You, you do have a lot of conflicts on weekends, Cliff, so.
Yeah.
I do too, but, uh.
Are, are you guys open for either Saturday or Sunday? I mean, uh.
Sunday's worse for me than Saturday, actually. So, I mean, Saturday, you know, I'd prefer doing it during the week, but it, it works better, I think, for us as a whole if we do it on a weekend, but I tell you what, Sunday is, I'm swamped.
I mean, if it, if it had to be during the week, and I had enough prior knowledge, as long as it's not on a Tuesday, I can, I can arrange my schedule if that's something we need to get done.
I think Saturday's probably better. Would you agree on that?
Okay, let me just check, and hopefully that, that's good.
So we're going to tentatively say for the 12th, uh?
9:00 AM?
At 8:00 AM?
Yeah, 9 to 12.
9 to 12?
9:00 AM.
9 to 12, one, something, you know.
9 to 12, 12.
Well, but would that be also including the reopening of the Community Center Park afterwards? Or would, could that be on a different date?
Well, it could be on a different date, I, um.
Can be, it's just I just thought it would be.
At one point, we thought it would be good to bring them together, it's just we're.
Because we were all together and do that.
Yeah, it didn't look like it.
Either way.
Okay.
It's, I, Cliff, how, how do you feel about pushing the community park?
You know, it isn't.
The library park?
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine, I mean, the weather, probably better, and coincide with, uh, rebuilding together day.
Oh, no, it's going to rain like heck. It's going to, it's going to rain like heck in April, man. April flower, April showers bring May flowers, right?
No, I think.
Been getting some good ones, so.
Okay, so Saturday, April 12th?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, item D, reset date for Bayland Citizen Committee recognition. I ask this to be, uh, put back on here. Um, I know there was some discussion out there and maybe some confusion too, that, uh, what we're recognizing, who we're recognizing, and I think we're recognizing everybody the same who participated. Is that, if I'm correct?
That would be my impression.
Yeah.
All the participants, not singling out anything heroic.
Right.
And what about the Open Space Ecology Committee? I believe there were members who had, of that committee.
Yeah, that, that was the second part probably of this, should we recognize our committees and commissions too, who've participated thus far? I mean, I know our planning commission hasn't reviewed it, so.
Well, they, they've been, I, I think that we, why not recognize everyone's input unless it seems that commissions are different than volunteers, even though they're all volunteers to a certain degree.
How do you want to recognize them? With their certificate, or do you want to have like a, some kind of like thing, you know, like in the, you know, the, the planning department table with the little sandwiches?
Really talked about, huh?
Cookies or something like that?
Cake and coffee afterwards, uh, I, I think, I think, uh, I think a certificate would really be nice as, as far as something somebody can hang on their wall. Yeah. Not talking about a plaque, but, you know, we have certificates that we do print up on a later printer.
Like a little cake and ice cream?
Huh?
And a little cake and ice cream afterwards, or?
Yeah. Yeah. So, question is, do we do our Open Space Ecology and, uh, Parking Rec Commission? Because I think they're the only two who've reviewed it thus far. Is that correct? And I'm looking at staff for confirmation here, if that's.
Yeah.
Seeing nodding heads, either, either you're ready to fall asleep or that's a fact.
You look at us, and I don't, sometimes I don't know if you want input or you're just looking at me. Um, I think the only difference was that we had thought of originally that the Citizens Committee was kind of a unique, um, formulation of folks that came around for just this one particular item, um, and it might be appropriate to kind of recognize their efforts. And, you know, we're going to, we'll have opportunities, I guess, with the other commissions who separately, maybe. That was the original thought.
Yeah, and, and, and that's probably a, a good one too, because I think we'd want to let the Planning Commission at least get their teeth into it, you know, especially after a public hearing, you know? We got to let them know we love them. So, okay, uh, what do you think of that? Just go with the Citizens Committee?
Yeah.
Um, this is to the council.
Yeah.
I'm looking at you, but, um.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think that, you know, we should recognize everybody at an appropriate time, and, uh, with the appropriate time for the Citizens Committee is, you know, sooner rather than later because they don't exist anymore. I mean, they're basically dissolved as of January 24th.
They're out of a job.
I can see, I can see that, um, you know, being a reason to do them separately because they aren't in, in existence until, unless they get recalled.
Right, yeah. Okay, let's do that then, and, um, so since that is St. Patrick's Day, I guess, uh, what do you think, chief, uh, Bailey's Irish Cream?
Oh, you're going to make them come in on St. Patrick's Day because we have to?
Maybe we should get feedback from them, see if they want to do it in April. I mean, maybe there's some of them that don't want to come in on St. Patrick's Day.
Can we get feedback and leave that date, leave that open? And perhaps, um, Councilmember Miller can see if that date works for the people he knows that's on that, around that committee?
I suspect so, but we'd have to ask, you know?
Why don't we tentatively schedule?
But I think, why don't we tentatively schedule it unless there's a problem?
Okay.
That's March 17th?
All right, March 17th then.
Yeah, I don't think we have any partiers on that.
Well, you already have a council meeting.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so going on to item E, which is set April 5th, uh, for Brisbane Fire Station Open House, is that, do we still want to do it on that date, or?
Yeah, I think so, because, uh, the idea of this, the fire department kind of wanted to have just their annual open house and, and kind of combine that with, uh, showing off the, the reopened station and, you know, people, showing the people the improvements, but all, but do it basically in the concept of the, the annual open house they do.
Yeah. Staff could, did a good job, Randy and his crew, on, uh, expediting those trailers out of there. I thought the fire department should have set them on fire and then did a demonstration.
Oh, I think that would have been too hazardous.
That, uh, probably could have backfired on us, so.
I know. I, I joked about that for years.
At least Ray got it.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Remember for years, he used to say that about the old fire department, hey, we ought to burn it down right in the middle of the council meeting, and they come in, they go, oh, we got a fire, what's on fire, man? It was, it's the old firehouse. Remember that? That's funny. Okay, uh, now that we got all that out of the way, oral communication is number two, Dr. Saber, who wants to?
Enjoy your.
All right. It's adjourned. All right. Good job.